There we go.
All right. Order the February seventh meeting, pressing commission.
Let's live this is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Should help bring our surprise and interest. And also interest that if we have anybody that has signed up in the public, I think so. Tears are. That time brings down to our first appointment, Mr. Justin Wolf. The budget revision. Come on, Justin.
Morning.
Morning.
So.
This is the lowest I've ever seen.
Uh, yes, yes. Uh, this is the budget revision. It will be to decrease oh one, seven, eleven, two, fourteen, uh, which is travel in amount of two thousand and increase oh one, seven, eleven, two, eleven, oh, two, which is, uh, utilities, telephone, and US. And we, uh, we could add some, some new devices to that, so it's up a little bit more than what we just stated at the beginning of the year. So it'll be to cover that, and we changed some of our accounts around a little bit with some priority stuff, um, that USA they're offer, so, uh, just a little bit of mixture there, but.
Is this the OBM budget?
Correct, Jim.
Okay.
We have a bunch of revisions.
No. I believe so. At this time, I move to approve the budget revision as it has been presented.
I'm sorry, hang on.
Number second to approve the budget revision, Commissioner.
Thomas, yes.
Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You lost us, Justin.
There you go.
All right. We're now prepared. Motion to review and approve the bills.
At this time, I move to pay those that have been properly presented and reviewed.
Second.
We should hold a second to pay the bills, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Yes. And now that brings us to our next appointment, which is with Linda Huggins. On the ballot commissioners.
I apologize, I don't have a document to present to you, but I shared with Samantha and I, um, I was kind of on the way, so I'm a little organized, a busy weekend, anyway. I guess it's not a weekend, this is what day.
Busy four days.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I'm like a Monday.
And so, so it is, um, responsibility to get ballot commissioners that serve a two-year term and, um, Democrat ballot, executive committee has appointed Linda Lilly to, um, be the Democrat ballot commissioner. She is from Independence. I've always spoke with her and she's new to the process and is very excited to, to learn about how things are done. And then Republican ballot commissioner will be Joe Williams again, and he has served in the past. He's lived on Morgan Street in Cleveland. So I just need your approval to appoint those ballot commissioners for a two-year term. At this time, I move to appoint Linda Lilly as the Democrat ballot commissioner and also Joe Williams as the Republican ballot commissioner for the two thousand five.
Second. We should hold a second to approve and appoint these ballot commissioners, Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. I'll go over to the, she, she presented off until she gets the form to.
All right, we got a minute to spread it. Nothing from the assessors, although just going to skip over that and then. Or that do have a motion to approve minutes of January sixteenth.
At this time, I move to approve the minutes for January sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
We should hold a second to approve the minutes for January sixteenth, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Yes. All right, now, it is not a call. And we're going to hear Mills Group.
Oh, great.
This one.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner. Um, well, thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come before the commission to give you an update of our project, across the street at the courthouse. As many of you know, we've been hired as your on-call architects, um, and this is one of our first tasks within the on-call services, so. The other, the other thing I want to share with you, we've been encouraged to work with you all for almost fifteen years, um, and it's been a very good relationship. And as we take on these projects, truly take them on as if it's our own buildings. So, um, you know, we do a lot of due diligence, really, we're looking after your best interests and want to share that in our presentation here, so. Uh, Stephen, you know, he's with us today. Stephen's been working closely with our team on this project and I'll share a little bit of the process here in the next first slide. So, as you all know, um, this is a very high-profile project. It's, um, really adding the second courtroom for the circuit court, um, and that's a mandate that's come down from the state. Uh, so, a couple of considerations, um, you know, we've got to work with the state Supreme Court. They have certain standards, uh, that we'd have to adhere to. And certainly, uh, we've been working closely with Judge Schaefer, uh, and his staff to accommodate all the needs. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts here and, uh, we want to make sure we, we cover all the bases, uh, from the client perspective. But as we look at the considerations, obviously, cost is a big thing. You guys don't have the endless budget, um, so we really need to be mindful, spend your money as if it's our own. Uh, we have to adhere to the state Supreme Court's, uh, regulations and guidelines. Court security is a big concern, uh, so just the layout is very conscious of security and maintaining that at all times as best we can, uh, in the program. You know, obviously, there's a certain, certain amount of things that need to fit in this box and we'll share those components with you. The other aspect is we have a historic building, you know, it's not like we can pump an addition on this, you know, very easily. Uh, we can't be tearing out windows, you know, really, as you'll see this concept, we're doing nothing to the historic exterior. Um, and really, the historic core is, is not changing. And we'll, we'll address some of those issues as we do that to it. Um, and with that, we think about maintenance, long-term maintenance, you know, it's not just this initial cost that we think about. We need to think about down the road, what's going to be best for, for you all. And we'll, we'll touch on some of that. And then phasing, you know, this is going to be an operational building. We're not going to shut down the courthouse to do this work, so we're working closely with, um, Kevin and the facilities group, um, with the annual and, uh, and his team, uh, to really make sure that this building doesn't get shut down. There's a phase plan where we're able to move people around and do it in a logical way. Um, so as you all know, existing conditionalizes, this is the floor plan that we're looking at. Access to floor, obviously, from the main stair, the elevator sits here, and that's the existing courtroom. That's, that's there. A couple of, while we're on this slide, you know, from a historic preservation perspective, um, you know, the state historic preservation office gets excited by the exterior envelope, but the other aspects of it are the core, this core element, right? And that's, that's something that we really can't touch or manipulate. Those are the aspects, much like the courtroom upstairs. I mean, that was an early consideration that was brought to the table, could we divide that courtroom in half? Well, that's a historic aspect of the skill, right? It's a defined feature of that building, so that really was not on the table. So that led us to really look at this floor and how could we, um, you know, play a little game of Tetris and move some things around. So we'll go to the next slide. So this, this did kind of put some color to it, just kind of zones of what's what and where, um, and, um.
Let's see if we can get their colors there.
Right. So this is where the current layout is for the prosecuting attorney, which is moved out. Moved out. Uh, the yellow is just circulation. These are things that we're going to have to pretty much keep intact.
Right.
The rest is.
Clear well, the common area and the yellow.
And then, right now, this is all the ma, the blue is what's left over in terms of the magistrate. And you can see that number, just try to remember that number, two, four, twenty-two. That's basically the footprint of the existing magistrate space, which is, um, somewhat big in terms of what's in this space, like the storage and some of these other places isn't being used to its whole potential. In terms of efficiency. Just remember that as we go into upper.
So this is, you know, as we approach this, we've cost in mind and just kind of looking at, uh, all the factors. How could we likely touch this, uh, space? Um, and what it's showing red are all the walls that are being removed. The other aspect of it is the heating and cooling system, you know, at every window, there's a fan coil unit here, and our intentions are not to move those at all. We have one that we need to slightly move left or right because of a, of a door issue, but otherwise, that's not just paying in place. So from a mechanical, a left, uh, mechanical perspective, it's, it's a really minimal touch that we're doing. Uh, electrically, obviously, if we're moving walls, we're going to move electric ground and also the state Supreme Court is very assessive to the data. So they'll be running data cable and working with us on the plan, uh, for the data cable. So those are aspects that are going to come in. Lighting, obviously, as we move walls and it'll affect ceilings, so we're going to have to manipulate some lighting. Plumbing, we are going to show you here that we're adding and moving some bathrooms around. One is bringing up the code to get the right fixture count and to make sure we abide by ADA. So this, this drawing here just shows you the new walls, uh, that we're adding and we'll, we'll show you the new plan, but this, as a, as a point of reference, what's in blue are strictly the new walls. So again, there's probably ten, eight to ten new walls that we're adding, um, in, in this plan. Let's just jump to the next one. So this, this drawing here shows really the area of new work, um, and what we're going to have to, um, touch on. We're really leaving what, uh, was the magistrate court and its supporting areas alone. I mean, as much as we could stay out of it, we're staying out of it. We have a little bit that we need to touch on back here, which is kind of the back of the house right now, which magistrates enter from this way into that courtroom. But that's just from an ADA perspective and some other support needs, we're, we're touching on that. We're adding a bathroom, uh, in this area here, an ADA bathroom, which will serve, uh, the staff, um, behind, behind the walls. There are no public facilities on this floor, all the public facilities are on the ground level. Now, in the courtroom's jury room, you have a current bathroom that serves the jury room. And as we do the new jury room, there'll be an ADA bathroom associated with it.
That makes sense, that's really.
That's, that's a requirement, that's absolutely a requirement. But this drawing really shows you the area of work that we're going to be touching. So we're doing nothing to these office spaces, uh, and we'll talk about those in a minute, and really the focus is kind of in this corner. So this, uh, really talks to, um, you know, the requirements from the Supreme Court. So this is kind of a line-by-line playbook that, that we've been working closely with Pat Most at the Supreme Court, closely with Judge Schaefer, uh, to really make sure we're adhering to those standards. And you can see, you know, the minimum standards for the magistrates are a hundred, a hundred square feet per office. We're exceeding it.
Yeah, I see that, yeah, in every, every, in every situation, exceeding what the requirement is.
Yeah, even courtroom, we're at three hundred square feet, we're actually at five hundred seventy-three square. Yeah, and that's honestly, that was the nature of the space. We could have made it smaller, but from a construction perspective, it would cost more. It didn't make sense.
Yeah.
And we also have to make sure we have circulation through that area for egress, so, you know, some of these had to be a little bigger just because of, you know, saving money down the road and, and not.
Well, and square and stuff all properly, you know, unless you're building a new building, you're not going to have it exactly.
Exactly. So those are some aspects that really, as we are looking at this, and then maybe Steve will go to the next one, you can kind of walk them through just what's what, where.
Sure.
So in the existing plan, you remember, this is where all these offices are, and we're redistributing those here and up here, so we're kind of separating those. We're only really losing one window. So you're going to have two here, one through this door here. So all those offices will be taken care of, the magistrate offices will be relocated from these three to these three. And then this whole new program of the second district court will come up on this side of the building.
So again, providing security and direct access to the courtroom, which is important for, for these, for the judge and his support staff. And the same with the magistrates, if they're here, which now, you know, only two of them have windows, the third doesn't. So we're providing both, all three to have windows and their support staff are just outside of them and then direct access into the, to the courtroom there.
And this core footage now would be twenty-three.
Yeah, so we've lost eighty square feet in this, in this shovel.
And realistically, some of that's gained back.
Yeah, and that actually.
I see that.
Honestly didn't lose, I mean, honestly, we're probably up two hundred square feet, quite honestly, because the clerk now has their own space up in that court. So you've taken over that prosecuting attorney's area to put the clerk's offices. It was actually gained.
There was concern that there was a loss of a break room, but the frequency of jury trials within magistrate courts is low. So the thought that we had, when we had talked with the staff, would it be able to use this jury room as the break room when there wasn't a jury.
Right.
Uh, trial and session, which is concerning, we wanted to.
Right. Yeah.
It matters.
And we, this bathroom, we made out those two little tiny bathrooms. We did add back another one.
Right.
Another small bathroom, just to have our fixture count. So we haven't lost anything we won't gain in terms of.
That's what I was saying, yeah, it looks, I can really see, I see you had the bathrooms.
This is just, um, highlighting the office of the magistrates, their courthouse, their courtroom will be here, uh, District Two judge in this courtroom. Highlighting the new restrooms versus existing and then highlighting which ones are inaccessible. And this is just showing where the potential lift would go in the event that you have a judge or magistrate that requires, um, either the use of a wheelchair or some other means of.
Each, because of each, much like you all here, um, each judge is up at least a step, you know, so.
Right.
We need to think ahead of the what-if, you know, if a judge is.
No, it makes, that makes first sense. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be criminally disabled.
Right.
It's a group of like.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Fall of the house, Miller.
Yeah. And this is set up, and this is, this was a recommendation by the Supreme Court to provide an area that a lift would go. So the intention is not to buy that today, um, and that's not in the budget to buy today. Um, I think the, in the courthouse facilities money down the road, those are fundable items, so we can make that ask. And maybe ask for one over here, one to the next, or are we actually with that? But we are providing all electric, all the space for it, and that was.
She's basically roughed out already, yeah.
Yeah, that was the Supreme Court's recommendation. You know, a big thing too for us is phasing, um, this is talk that we need to talk further with the judge, with the panel and, and the team about this, but we certainly see that, you know, the prosecuting office, attorney's offices, so that, that's a natural place to start, right? You, you could.
There's nothing there.
Nothing there, so we could get that clerk's area ready, done, and then get them moved in there and free up some space here. And then the next phase, obviously, is, is that corner that can be segmented. I mean, ideally, you know, these things are done together, but if we have to, you know, segment them into pieces and phases, just from a, um, law logistic perspective, that's a natural way to do it. And the last would be the other courtroom and the supporting spaces for the.
Truly, it's a very minimal project.
I mean, that's, it, it is, I mean, we, we try to touch it as lightly as we can, um, and, and be just logical about it. Um, again, it's a little bit of a Tetris game of trying to figure out, uh, where folks go and, and being mindful of their true needs. The other thing that's, uh, we've worked closely with the state Supreme Court is they've taken the existing furniture and put it in the plan. So they, they've been very mindful to take and make sure everything fits from that. But it's one thing to draw a room, but if the desk doesn't fit in, it, it doesn't work, it doesn't do any good. So we've worked closely with them to coordinate that, and then the other aspect of that is the data and security aspect that's on the table.
Because we would be on the hook for.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
We would have.
No, no. The Supreme Court is required to furnish the, to do all the furniture in magistrate courts and family courts. You guys are responsible for circuit courts. Now, what I can tell you, there's going to be furniture left over for magistrate court, and they have, through working, me working with them, they are giving us the extra furniture for the circuit, uh, judge and everything. And also throughout the remotes, because Preston County isn't the only county that's going through.
Right.
Okay? And in other counties, if there's desks and things that, uh, they can give us, they're going to give us, and I'm actually going to take a construct and wherever I need to go get furniture, to go get furniture for the new judge, to do his law clerk, the court reporter, his assistant, and hopefully you guys will not have to purchase any furniture at all. We've worked out a trade, uh, there was a little table in the old prosecutor's office that will be the new jury room table in the new magistrate court jury room.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
And the existing, the existing jury room table will stay in that though, the existing jury room for the circuit judge. So then, you know, we're trying to save costs everywhere together.
That was, that's what we had to share with you, I was kind of, kind of share with you the logic of how we approached it, kind of the constraints and the opportunities that we found, and, um, we feel very comfortable with this plan, it's, it's very pop through, it's, um, you know, it's cost-effective, uh, so we think it's.
Yeah, I think with the bathrooms and manipulating the floor plan in such a way that actually minimizes the amount of space that's lost and actually gaining space.
Correct, so, yeah. Um, timeline, you know, we're on a race, I mean, we've got to get the new judge in by, um, first of next year.
Let's cut to the chase then, when we did this out.
So we're meeting, uh, April fifteenth? April fifteenth, or s- nineteenth, maybe?
Okay.
So we've kind of worked this schedule to allow about a seven-month construction period. Uh, and that allows for about a month on the backend for you all to close it out, move the furniture.
If there's anything, anything, be nothing.
Yeah, so, um, I think, I think it's realistic, we have no concerns.
You guys work hard, like. Cool, let's do it.
Awesome, wonderful.
Any other questions?
You answered my question.
Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity.
Jennifer, do you, I, I think Jennifer, the press might have some questions.
Yes, because we get tall things of those layouts because we couldn't see them.
So, right, but.
Yeah, that's fine, you can email it to everybody. It's about the knowledge, yeah, and send it to everybody, sort of stuff. You can email it to others when we get.
Yeah, we'll send it to Daniel.
Yeah, cool, I'll get it all taken care of. Sounds good.
So you email them?
Yep, yep.
You got a jump drive right there.
You're trying to free.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wrap up there.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I just want to thank the defendants. Uh, number one, a lot of people don't understand that the West Virginia constitution gives the legislators not only the authority, but they have to do it, they have a duty every eight years, uh, prior to the judicial elections, to look at all the numbers in the state of West Virginia. And basically, the legislature determines the number of judges that circuits need, the number of magistrate, the number of family court judges. And basically, that's what the legislature did this past year, the two thousand twenty-three session. Uh, there was a complete caseload study done throughout West Virginia. Uh, basically, in speaking to Ms. Jennifer Graham, uh, a couple of weeks ago, she informed me that Judge Miller told her as far back as two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, that Preston County needed a second judge. And what I did was I prepared a little chart that I'm going to give you guys just to show, just to show you when people say that Preston County doesn't need a second judge.
He shared something with us, it's very similar.
Yeah, very similar, and I actually made this chart up when Ms. Graham came over and wanted to talk. And basically, as you can see, uh, the last judicial study was done in two thousand fourteen, and they used years two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And those three years were one hundred and fifteen abuse of the law cases. Then this time, they used two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and we had three hundred and sixty-six, more than tripled the abuse of the law cases. Felony cases in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen was two hundred and forty-two. For two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, they had four hundred and thirty, almost double. And these are the two main cases, these cases have time guidelines that we have to comply with, which means that we're not even getting a chance hardly to pack the civil cases.
That's what people need to understand, it's mandated, needed, and I look as, added as a positive for you and Preston County to maybe potentially save money off the regional jail.
If we can, the goal is to speed up the amount of time, as I said before, when, when someone is arrested, basically, there's, uh, that case ends in one of three ways. He either goes to trial, he pleads, or he gets dismissed. And until those things happen, if those people are incarcerated, the county has to absorb the, the regional jail bill. So if we can cut that amount of time down for the time a person is arrested till when, uh, we can, uh, offer them a trial, when the prosecutor's office can, uh, offer a plea, or if there's no case there, get dismissed and get the individuals out of jail, then we can reduce the regional jail costs.
You know, I truly believe we can, I believe we can cut it in half if the two judges work together.
Yes, that's what I, again, that, that's our goal. And one other thing that I want to touch on, I know that there's been a lot of, uh, uh, bad press out there about all this. Uh, basically, uh, the magistrate court is claiming they never had any input in this. The county had a meeting, there was people from the magistrate court there, and as you heard the Mills Group talk about, their plan was to cut the big courtroom in half upstairs. Which you cannot did. Number one, uh, I can't tell you the number of jury trials we've had, uh, in the six years that I've been judge. Okay? magistrate court has had one jury trial in the last three and a half, four years. You know, uh, there is a huge difference, we bring in pedicures, we bring in pedicures, we have pedicure orientation, we normally have, uh, somewhere between, uh, seventy-five and a hundred and ten people there for pedicure orientation, we have two of it each pedicure orientation. When we bring in the pedicures for trials, uh, basically, there's a lot of time, we'll bring in a hundred jurors if we have, and as everybody knows, with Preston County was getting with, you know, the extreme number of murders, and basically, we've had trial after trial.
Well, not even that, historically, we can't cut that.
No, no.
The state wouldn't let us.
No. And the big thing I would like to say is, uh, it's, you know, I started on this two years ago, with a sixteen-foot tape measure in the courthouse. And putting together, the only plan that I felt was feasible, there, that plan as well as other plans was presented to the Mills Group, the Mills Group looked at everything, this is the only way feasible to actually do this. The easy decision would have been, the West Virginia law requires the circuit courts are housed in the court, in the courthouse. The easy decision for me would have been to move the magistrate courts out of the courthouse, put the second judge on the second floor, but then it would have cost the county money because of security. Right now, when someone comes to court in Preston County, they come to one building, and that building is secure with security.
There's no guarantee we would reclaim our rent.
Right.
You're going to.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought those things out to you guys today and to, to the public. You know, this is needed, it's mandated by the state, and basically, uh, working with the Mills Group and the Supreme Court, I can tell you the Supreme Court is tickled to death with Mills Group, and they've actually said that they wish the other groups that they've worked with was as good to work with.
It's their area of profession.
Yes. And I, number, number one, I want to thank you guys for this. Number one, uh, you know, this is, uh, this is going to be a great improvement for the people of us.
And we're, and we're ahead of the path of West Virginia with this, uh.
Yeah.
We're leading the way.
Yeah. And the Supreme Court will tell you that, that we're way ahead of the game, because others are just getting started on this. All right? Thank you guys.
Thank you, Judge.
All right. What brings us to this, Danny's set on the list.
At this time, I move to approve the state's settlement list for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, for January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, for five department, record, and books.
Second.
Hold a second to approve the state's settlement, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Yes.
I move to dispense with the readings and the proceedings and vacation and enter them into, uh, record and open court session, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
To accept the proceedings and vacation and, and record, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
That was.
Sorry, it's just not me.
Sorry. Commissioner Stan.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry. He kept doing every one and it cut me off, sorry.
I'm just glad I'm not Dave Price anymore. All right. Oh, it's Dave.
That brings us down to the District Commission for Court Attorney Seventh. At this time, I have a motion to accept the court, District Commissioner, or, or. At this time, I have a motion to accept the state's state commissioner for, for twenty twenty-three fourth quarter state statute report.
So no.
Second.
Motion for second to approve the judiciary commissioners for, for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
At this time, I may accept and record the judiciary commissioner report for unprogressed state status report.
Second.
Now, Commissioner Thomas, second to accept the judiciary commissioners' unprogressed state's status report. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Yes. Last one.
Good morning.
Okay, at this time, I made the request for the judiciary commissioners' recommendations slash order for the state of Ann M. Klon.
Second.
Commissioner Thomas, second to approve the judiciary commissioner's recommendations and order for the state of Miss Klon. Commissioner Thomas. Yes. Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Yes. We hold this, we hold new business. The Chamber of Commerce has a Preston, uh, Preston Day, Preston County Day funding.
Um, yes, so I think, um, that Preston County Day at the legislature was very beneficial this year. We had all three commissioners. Um, Connie was there, Linda was there, the Hartson Rex, the Chamber, the Senior Center. A lot of good lobbying happened. And I think we should give some form of a contribution. I don't think we can give a whole lot because we're just financially strapped, but, you know, I, I think we can do something.
Um, I move that we.
Before you move.
Sure. We can discuss it. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, make your motion and discuss it.
Um, I move that we, uh, do a contribution of one thousand dollars to the Chamber of Commerce for Preston County Day at the legislature.
Yes, sir. I tell you what, all right. Only second at this time. We have a discussion. I mean, here, here's the thing with this. To be very frank, I, I've been going to Preston County Day for ten years now. I asked privately several people to come down for it this time. And I said I would not reveal their names. I said I want an honest answer. I'm going to ask you an honest question. Is this worth your time and effort? And they all told me that.
And why do they attend?
You did. That.
Because I do feel.
Because there were fewer people attending this year. There were several open tables where they did not even attempt to come down. Even though they said they were coming, they didn't come down. I was told explicitly, I mean, I mean, and I'll let you talk as one of the wish. Okay. But I just want to get this off my chest because I, I was very honestly, I didn't want to this. Like I said, this is, this was my tenth time I went down. Because it started before I became a commissioner. And in some ways, I see it, it's a neat thing to do. But I was told explicitly by someone after I asked the question, they told me no, that we would be better served to go down there before or after the session of the legislature is out of session to talk with different heads individually of the departments we need to talk to because we would be able to have more of their time to get it done correctly, to get across our point. The fact that we're going down and eating breakfast to a bunch of lobbies and staffers. And honestly, one of them needs to refer to him as trick or treaters because I did. All they did was come by their table and say, what do you got to give me? And I'm serious. That's what I was told. In that sense, it's my personal opinion. I, I don't see the need for this. I'm, I think we're better served just to go down when legislature is not session to do this and not have a question. And also, one of them even told me, and I didn't think about it until later, and I actually thought about it on my ride back from Charleston, that they, they said it's almost like an ego thing now because we're one of the few counties that do it. So it's almost like an ego.
There's, there's a lot of counties that do it.
It does, it does set count Preston County apart. And whoever you're coming from with the legislators and other cabinet members not having time because they're very busy in session. I do think some of the things we did was beneficial, um, the talk with tourism.
But we can do that at any time. That's why, we can go down there and actually have their whole afternoon to talk to them.
What I, what I would propose, because I do think it's beneficial, could some things be, um, a little better? Yes, that we're all truly working to make things work. I think next year I want to work on bringing more kids down because that's a part of it I really like. Um, then kids that came down with food service, all of them, except one, had never been to Charleston before. So that really is beneficial there. And when I was in high school, I looked forward to that. I don't want to do a thousand because we, we truly do have a tight budget, but I would recommend a compromise of five hundred dollars.
Um, one thing that I would, would like to contribute to this is for every, for every negative you can come up with something, there is a, a positive that you can come up also. And, um, I've heard much of the contrary to what Commissioner Smith, um, had been talking with. Um, but there's a lot of benefits, uh, for lobbyists, for your commissioners, for your other elected officials traveling down, the networking, uh, the, the discussions that go on where you are sharing ideas with other counties and people around the state is, is very beneficial. I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm done. And when you have, so like, for example, last year we had a post-action Preston County Day meeting where we discussed ways to cut costs to make it, uh, to make it better.
They did cut costs.
They did cut costs. And, and, and Christie with the chamber does an exceptional job at doing, uh, trying to rearrange things. So post or prior to pre-Preston County Day, there was a call that I was on with the, uh, elected, state elected officials, um, and also the chamber, uh, their, their board. Uh, I was on that call and they discussed key, um, things that, uh, could be lobbied for during Preston County Day. So you put your best face forward and you go down there. And it's really not to set appointments. Our legislators, our electeds, um, we can talk to them on the daily, right? We can get ahold of them. They're at our disposal. But it's really to go down and see where we can put pressure to get the things that we need with the people that we don't talk to on the daily. So my targets, when I go to Charleston, are not necessarily our current elected officials that represent us. It's those electeds that surround us that have a vote in the legislature. Um, and so to be able to have an impact for them to say, you know, yeah, it might be buckwheat cakes to some, but it's really something for those folks down there to remember that Preston County shows up in full force on a day dedicated to celebrating our county. And I believe that you have to be remembered or you are completely forgotten.
And I think it shows unity and it puts on a, um, I want to say a good pride.
Right.
I think it, it really is a good thing. I would move that, um, we, um, give, um, the Preston County Chamber a five hundred dollar contribution for, um, Preston County Day.
I will second that motion.
One or second to.
I would like to discuss this a little bit more.
Discuss a little bit more.
Just not to like, to beat it to death, but I will be, um, meeting and working with Christie as a post-meeting with the chamber board to see where we can be more effective, where we can make better ideas and different things. And I welcome ideas, um, to, from others that attended, even our, our other elected officials that attend so that we can maximize what we are doing in Charleston because it's, it is important.
And I think, and I think next year they're going to look for more sponsors so they can take a bus down for kids and do, do more things.
And we used to, and, and nothing, um, against, you know, Mon County, but we used to have a collaborative Preston and Mon County Day, but we have so much. We are, even though, um, we work well with Mon County, we're very different than Mon County. And so, you know, when we get into our meetings that were scheduled, uh, with Mon County, it's easy for Preston to get swallowed up with the needs of Mon County. So we felt it was important, um, just to stand alone on our day so that we can have the full focus of the people that we're talking to down there. Not because Mon County did anything wrong, um, just because we wanted it to be our day. And, uh, and, and I think there's things that we can make stronger. I had several people reach out to me and I was going to talk with Christie about this, you know? Is there a bus that, that people can write down? You know? That's one thing, the benefit we're getting with Mon County is they had a transit that took people down on the Preston County Day and it was funded by different sources and sponsors. And so, you know, I think that's things that we can rally and, and help in conjunction with the chamber because I will stand firm that it is important. And it doesn't always seem important to some, but sometimes we need to really look at what we're trying to do down there.
And I would agree. It is a, it is a packed day, so it's hard to, um,
Busy, busy time.
Do exactly what you want to do because you only have limited time. And I would agree with you, Don. We can go down any day and not lobby. You probably have more time, but I think Preston County Day just shows unity and putting on a good pride to, um, show that we're all together.
I, I actually have a question. Sure, I can ask.
Yeah.
Are there any, have we ever used any form of tracking metrics? To sort of, to sort of, maybe one like that, if we.
It's not ours. So we did not, we actually have that.
Well, have, have they, have we requested tracking metrics?
We can talk to them about that. Because it used to be the EDA that, that did it, and then they try and send it to the, to the chamber.
Because my suggestion would be, instead of saying anecdotally, here's what I heard, or we would have some sort of, you know, objective metric that they say, look, these are the connections that we made. And even if we aren't able to realize those in the next year, two years from then, uh, or two years prior, we were able to do that because those are the networks that are built.
Yeah, yeah.
That allow you for that. So if any kind of metric like that might be open.
And I, I understand and we can talk to the chamber about that, but I think, yeah, we can for future, but we're.
I, I think it's important to always spend every dollar.
I think it can start, you know, it's not technically a metric, but it is something, you know, when you say, I appalled people and told them I wouldn't say who they were because they want to, you know, have anybody mad at them. But they honestly, you know, I asked them an honest question properly and maybe you should hold to that. And I, my opinion would be you need to have, you need to have a survey. You should do a survey and see.
I believe they have done that.
Because technically, because technically, hold on a second. There's one thing that I'll get you. I, I mean, I've got more benefit when I'm going to talk to legislators, when we go down for a county commissioner's association thing. You know what I mean? Because they're there. I could, when he's, when I'm sitting there having, that there was receptions with them. I've got, I've got, I've got complete access to this person to talk to. And I'm talking to not, I'm not talking to our delegates in our center. I'm talking to other, from around because they're there. Because they want to get a free dinner and it was my grand opportunity to have a whole. I'm not lying. It's the truth. It is the truth. It, but you know what? If you're going to have your snack, I'm going to talk to you because now you're my hostage for a minute while you're eating your plate, you know? And that's what I do. And I, I mean, I'm not ashamed of that because I have talked to senators from all over the state and delegates from different parts of the state. Not, and generally, yes, I'll say hello to ours, but I'm talking to the others that I see have, are sponsored of certain bills that I know matter to us. And that's what I'm doing. Comment.
Um, I just wondered when you asked that question, was it before the, they attended the day or after?
It was before and after, but, and during. So.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't ask it just, I didn't like jump on your business and walk through the door that morning.
When I'm.
I, I asked people that, now, people that have been there prior years, I did ask beforehand because they had the experience.
The reason I asked that is because, you know, sometimes I wonder myself, is it really worth it?
Right.
Um, honestly. And, um, you know, then you, there, it is hard to make points with.
It is difficult during that time. But the whole session, I think, is kind of like that.
Yeah.
But that, that was my point to make. I mean, we could literally, if we would go down in April, okay? After the set, just, and say, we're going to talk to.
I wasn't done.
I'm sorry. That's all it does.
But at the end of the day, I felt that it was very beneficial after a couple of meetings.
Yeah, Hertz and Rex had a very good platform. Yeah.
It was instrumental. It was very good. It not, could not have been done over the phone or any other way.
Yeah, because sometimes you just have to get in front of the people. And I understand you can do that anytime, Don. But they got in front of the DOH.
And that's, that's why I was going to ask you, you want to talk to.
We went and talked to, it was the, um, transportation part of DOH.
DOH. But, I mean, but there again, would it, could you have done that in April?
No, probably not. Because there were opportunities for other people to go. They were just, as arranged, lunches provided. You know, you have other people you could talk to there. And that, that, during our lunch and meeting, I thought that all my conversations were very beneficial. Um, and the, the concept that that's the day that you go. And as, you, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people in that meeting. We wouldn't have had that many people on another day.
But there is benefit in presenting a front and everybody taking their work that they've done and presenting it as a front and, you know, group effort. There's, there's masses in, in that. I, I, it benefit in the masses. So.
I'm just going to add one more comment. You can't build your own foundation taking stones from somebody else's foundation and we just need to work together. So I'm going to call for a question and we can take a look at this.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
I'm going to vote no until I see something improve.
Okay. We appreciate your opinion.
All right. County administrator report.
That would be you.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Happy February. Very short report this week, so you should be thrilled. No budget revisions or miscellaneous correspondence to report on this week, but we began February with a wonderfully attended and informative work session on the opioid settlement funding programming on February first. A number of great ideas were discussed. See our local news outlets for a recap of the highlights there. And additional discussions are ongoing as we look for the best solutions for the people of Preston County. Sheriff's Office. Edison is officially in the building. Work on the electrical boxes is continuing at pace, but just to note, as I just spoke with Tanya before the meeting this morning, the power will be off in the entire sheriff's building this Friday. And all arrangements to accommodate this outage have been made, although people might not be thrilled. Panhandle, big news. Panhandle has now arrived at the punch list phase. And our facility supervisor and Panhandle have arrived at a list of separate, a separation of duties for the remaining items. According to Panhandle's schedule, and I spoke to DJ this morning with the project manager, they are starting tomorrow with punch list items and are to be concluded by Monday, February twelfth, at which point they will exit the building. Keep your fingers crossed. And that brings me to the conclusion of my very brief report for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wow.
I'm happy to be completing that process.
Hopefully next week it's all good.
You live in the nerd and we're going to try not to make the mistakes again.
Uh, this time we'll wrap up with Commissioner Thomas. At ten o'clock we update with the board equalization.
Okay, well, I have a whole lot more to say than would give to ten minutes. Um, but, so I'm going to reserve some of my things because it can wait till next week, so I don't cut anybody else short. Um, but I do just want to say that we were at a conference, uh, West Virginia Association of Counties Conference. All three of us, well, myself, one hundred did attend, West Virginia Association of Counties Conference. Um, it was some good information.
And our county clerk and.
Yes, and our clerk and our assessor, uh, went down. Um, it, it gives me great, um, pride in Preston County to realize truly how well respected our electeds are at the state level. Um, I, I believe each of us on our own worked very hard on different things. And of course, the assessor is working hard on assessor's office things, and the same with the clerk's office. But when you get to that level where they're working with their equals and we're working with our equals and you see the lane and the responsibilities that each of us have, um, it just gives me great pride in what we are doing here in Preston County. Contrary to what some believe, we are doing a lot of things right.
And we have some of the best state officials representatives at.
We do. We do. And so, um, I, I'll just leave that at that. I believe Preston County Day was a huge win for Preston County. And I would challenge anybody that would like to discuss or come along to do so. Um, and I, I look forward to the post-meeting for that, uh, to figure that out. Also, um, I did speak with, um, some of our state elected, um, representatives that, uh, they are looking, uh, and trying to get some funding to trickle down to the counties that were forced to seat another judge that would help with some of that reconfiguration cost outside of the grant that we did obtain. Um, so that would be wonderful, but that's something that's on their radar. And I should know more about that soon. Um, there's a lot of bills that are going that are very, very beneficial to counties. And I didn't have time between getting back late last night and having our meeting first thing this morning to have a good report on things that our county residents can help by contacting our legislators and those others in the state that have a vote on some of these matters that do affect us here at the county level. It could be an hour report. There is some other stuff, of course, along with our board of equalization. I'm having email and calendar issues, which I think they're working on. But I do have a meeting tomorrow, uh, for a project that I've just decided to work alongside. Uh, that's the Bates World of Wonder meeting tomorrow. And then, uh, Friday, I'll be meeting, um, with our regions, uh, Region 4, District Highways. So if anyone has anything they'd like to reach out to me about, I'm certainly willing to listen. So I think that's all for now.
Okay, real quick. So I would agree with Samantha that Preston County Day was, um, very beneficial. Not to steal any thunder from the Preston County Parks and Recs, but I am just so excited for what they have coming down the pike and, um, what they're doing in Preston County. I think tourism and outdoor recreation is the future of, um, economic drive in Preston County because it truly is economic development and we have that, we have nature. And I may potentially be joining the board, but they're having to decide that. Then you guys might have to decide that. Um, I did want to bring up, I have a meeting with the Senior Center on Friday. If any of the commissioners want to join me about implementing, um, bus routes in Preston County where bus routes need to be. Um, it can be, um, a huge undertaking.
What time is that thing in progress?
I will get to you. Tina's still hammering out a date in the morning. But if you guys would like to, um, the team would just need to go over all the data. I will say, and I don't want to be a heavy downer, that we really need to, um, look, I know we're building like the second floor of the courthouse, but we have a bigger mold issue, um, on the first floor than what, um, they originally thought.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that because we asked the Mills Group to add it. And as, I, I'm going to probably use the wrong terminology here. An alt-add to the bin sort of stuff to allow companies to, you know, prospective contractors.
Uh, yeah, I know what you're like. I know what you're referring to.
That's correct. You did, but I knew.
Yeah, yeah, so we, so we don't have a whole lot of time, but we truly do need to look into that because I, um, mold is not good. And I'll just leave it at that. Um, other than that, not a whole lot. I think we need to get ready to wrap it up. So, Don, if you have anything.
I, I have a solid voice authority meeting this evening. Thankfully, we had a good time at the different conferences we went to over the last year. So I said we got to talk to some different legislators around the state, so that's a big help. Really, that is. So that's all I got.
Okay.
All right. I hope the chairman is ready.